All right, well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Leavenworth City Commission meeting tonight and ask if you could please silence or turn off your cell phones and would like to also remind everyone that our meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 and available for viewing at 6:00 PM at midnight and also on YouTube. And with that, we'll go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a sound prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and present it to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kickoff with a couple of proclamations here. All right, anybody representing the United Way?
There they are.
Feel free to share some comments afterwards, too.
Don't let him start though.
Oh, yeah. I'm on it.
All right. United Way months. Whereas the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hopes that all its citizens enjoy healthy, productive, and meaningful lives, and whereas the United Way of Leavenworth County advances a common good by creating opportunities for a better life for everyone, and whereas the United Way of Leavenworth County focuses on education, income, and health, which is a goal for a good quality of life because we all win when a child succeeds in school, when families are financially stable, and when people are in good health, and whereas it takes every part of the community, individuals, businesses, and organizations, to supply the passion, expertise, and resources needed to create lasting change for the better, and last year Leavenworth citizens and those of Leavenworth County generously contributed their volunteer energies as well as more than $220,000 to the United Way of Leavenworth County, thereby investing in programs and initiatives that improve lives and build stronger communities. And whereas the United Way of Leavenworth County kicks off its annual campaign during the months of September through December to unite the community and enhance the lives of those living in Leavenworth, Kansas, now therefore I, Griff Martin, Mayor of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim the months of September through December as United Way months.
Thank you. Just on behalf of the United Way of Leavenworth County and the board, we thank you so much for all your generosity, for just being you. I always say Leavenworth is such a giving community, and we are so appreciative of United Way, and we just encourage you to keep giving. Thank you.
Whereas the city of Leavenworth is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greater risk, greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022 according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas the city of Leavenworth Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire deaths and injuries through prevention and proper education, and whereas the city of Leavenworth residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, effectively serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Now therefore I, Griff Martin, Mayor of the city of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim October 2nd, 6th through 12th, 2024 as Fire Prevention Week and urge all the people of Leavenworth, Kansas to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2024 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts to Leavenworth's fire and emergency services.
Just a couple of things. You know, we push smoke detectors. We have, we have smoke detectors down there that people who own homes can come get those. Sometimes we get calls that people aren't working. We'll also go put a battery in for people also. Just wanted to take just a minute just to kind of, this time of year, Fire Prevention Week in October, it's always the week that has the ninth in it. That's the time we really focus on fire safety and go to the schools and things like that. And it's kind of, there was a fire, they called it the Great Chicago Fire in 1871, that it started on October 8th. It burned for three or four days. It consumed in Chicago 2,100 acres, including 17,500 structures, left 100,000 residents homeless. It damaged an estimated $222 million in 1871. Today, that'd be $5.7 million, or a billion dollars actually today. And the story goes that Mrs. Old Larry's cow knocked over a lantern in the barn, and they think that's what started the fire, but anyway, it consumed a lot. And then 50 years later, in 1921, Woodrow Wilson, the 28th president, issued the first Fire Prevention Day, which was October 9th. And then in 1922, William Harding, the 29th president, proclaimed Fire Prevention Week. And then in 1925, Calvin Coolidge, the 30th president, proclaimed the national, first National Fire Prevention Week, which is always a week in October that consumes October the 9th, so that's kind of the history of that.
All right, and we'll go ahead and move on to old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes from September 10th, 2024, regular meeting. There's no questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the city commission regular meeting, commission, regular meeting of the city commission of Tuesday, September 10th.
Okay, motion's been seconded. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed.
I didn't notice her.
Five to zero. That's all right. Second consideration ordinance, item 3, number 8250, adopts standard traffic ordinance 51st edition.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, and this item is before you for second consideration. There have been no changes or questions since the last reading, and it's ready to proceed if you are.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, so on a roll call vote, you state your name with your vote.
Edward Hingula, aye.
Wilson, aye.
Mayor Martin, aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Pittman, aye.
Bowder, aye.
Five to zero. Item 4, second consideration ordinance 8251, adopt Uniform Public Defense Code 40th Edition.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this item is before you for second consideration. There have been no changes or questions since the previous reading, and it's ready to proceed.
Okay, same roll call vote as last time then. Started with Commissioner Bowder.
Bowder, aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Pittman, aye.
Mayor Martin, aye.
Leavenworth City Commissioner Jermaine Wilson, aye.
And Ed Hingula, aye.
All right, five to zero. Public comment, Syria.
Yes, week one, Mr. Thomas Jones.
Okay, so if you go ahead and, when you come up to the opponent, if you could go ahead and state your name and address, and if we could keep comments limited to two to three minutes, would be great.
Yes, my name is Thomas Jones. I live at 2,200 Maple Avenue, Leavenworth, Kansas. I think my wife sent all of you an email about our driveway. We built a house. The driveway, I guess, failed inspection on final inspection to get a permit to inhabit. When the driveway was poured, the contractor called out the city to inspect one part of the driveway, and they asked him about the other part of the driveway, and they said, oh, everything looks good. They poured the concrete, and then on final inspection, they came and said, this doesn't meet ADA requirements. So they're saying we have to tear out the driveway, tear out the sidewalk, and lower it about a foot to get it level with the street, which to me is going to cause a tripping hazard, and, you know, to me it's going to be more, make me more liable if somebody falls. The city will be liable also because they're the ones that poured the concrete in the beginning. So we were just asking for a variance to be able to keep the driveway the way it is so we don't have to tear it out and replace it.
And all the other driveways down the street, they're all pretty much the same way. Everybody's driveway butts up against the sidewalk that the city poured, and it was not ADA compliant when they poured it.
Eight years ago.
And that's all we did was butt up to what was already there.
Yeah. Now, the part where we tore the sidewalk out and re-poured, it is ADA compliant. It's level, but the part that we just butted up to, they said, it's fine.
Yeah.
And they, the city engineer also said that it would be fine as long as we didn't have a driveway going to it, but since we butted up to it, now they want it lowered. If it was not, if we hadn't have butted up the driveway to it, they said, oh, it's fine for an entrance and exit.
But yet on inspection, they told our contractors it's fine.
Yeah. Sir, may I intervene?
Sure.
I did receive your email this morning. Based on that, I initiated a review with Mr. Faust. I had some conversations with him. I got a great deal of information. I sent some of that to you about midday today. I spoke with Mike Riley, who was involved in the process. I'm getting more, right, I'm getting some more information from him. So I'm reviewing the matter and working on some solutions or options available that might be able to help, and so if you give me a few days on that, I'd be glad to maybe help. But Mr. Jones, when I emailed, I replied to the email this morning, it wasn't accurate. So before you guys leave, if you could see the deputy chief back there, give him the name and number, so I can, I'll call you in the morning.
See, Holly Pittman replied. I mean, that was.
Did you personally type in the email address?
No, I just replied.
So Holly, she replied, we got her reply.
Okay, so if you could just leave the number, I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow. We'll see if we can't work through some solutions, maybe.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Pat. All right, anyone else?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to general items. Item 5, 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant application.
Our interim chief in just a second, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and fellow commissioners. Police Department is here before you tonight to ask for approval to apply for the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $24,711. This is an annual opportunity for the police department to be part of this grant. Each year, the JAG authorities publish a list of recipients. We are one of them again, in the amount of $24,711. We're required to share a percentage of this amount with Leavenworth County, and the appropriation would be broken down to $10,000 for Leavenworth County, $14,711 for the city of Leavenworth. Typically with this grant, we use that to replace old equipment such as tasers or body cameras at the police department. No city funds would be involved in this, so there's no budget impact. So we would ask that you have authorized the police department to apply for the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $24,711. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Remember, we did this last year, too.
Yeah.
You know, and it's great that we can get the money.
Can I ask why you need our permission to supply for a grant? Is it across the board like that?
Yeah. So as part of the provisions, some of the requirements are that the matter gets presented to the local governing body for approval. There's, that's a provision as, as part of the grant application process.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And there's a few documents that may already have to sign.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, do we know, just out of curiosity, what goes into determining the total amount that, that we receive?
I don't. Probably all vegetarian, it's varied quite a bit over the years, but maybe over the more recent years, it's hovering around the $30,000 mark.
Okay.
Last year was slightly higher.
Sure. I don't have any other questions either. Commissioner Bowder, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, then just need a motion.
I move that we give the police department authority to grant, to apply for the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $24,711.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed, five to zero. Thank you. Okay, resolutions. Item 6, Resolution B 2379, Capital Fund Program Grant for Planters 2.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, this is a resolution to accept the 2024 Capital Fund Program Grant for Planters 2. This is just our annual allocation from HUD, from HUD that we received to make capital improvements over the Planters 2 facility. This year, our amount is $209,449, and so we would just recommend that you adopt the attached resolution to the report.
Okay. Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, then we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the chat's resolution accepting the 2024 CFP grant for Planters 2.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 7, Resolution B 2380, Capital Fund Program Five-Year Action Plan and Capital Fund Annual Assess Statement for Planters 2.
Okay, thank you again. As you said, this is the 2024 to 2028 Capital Fund Program Five-Year Action Plan and our annual statement and performance and evaluation report. This goes along with the funds that you just approved us receiving. This is basically just our reports ahead telling them what we intend to do with the funds for the next five years. This year, we are undergoing a chiller replacement for the building utilizing all of those funds, and so that's taken up all of those, that entire allocation. That's getting ready to start here shortly this fall. And then each year, Andrew Huedemar, program manager over there, has a pretty large project laid out for, to utilize those funds, and that's all laid out in your report. And so again, we would just recommend that you approve the plan and authorize its submission to HUD.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on that?
No.
Okay, we just need a motion.
I move to approve the plan by adoption of resolution and authorize its submission to HUD.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right, motion passed, five to zero. Thank you. From here, we'll go ahead and move on to Resolution B 2381, Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Okay.
Mr. Commissioner, Julie McKeel will make this presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Martin, Commissioners. I'm here today asking, this evening, asking for you to approve the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. This is the annual report that is put together and submitted to HUD to explain to them by giving them narrative and data statistics on what we used the funds for throughout this last program year. This did go through the Community Development Advisory Board and was approved to bring here to you at that meeting on September 9th. We did have a public hearing. We abided by citizen participation by having it posted for the allotted amount of time and had available the public library online and in the office. Some of the great accomplishments, because I know you guys do like to hear some of the good stuff that we do, okay? So we had a goal of five families being able to utilize the home ownership program and five worked fulfilled. There are a lot of great details all throughout this report, providing the statistics that come with this. I'm really happy about the blend of statistics that we have. For example, with the homeownership, we had three female head of household, two families white, two families black, and one reported as other, and one household was reported as having one or more disabled in the home. Home repair, we had a goal of 11, and we obtained 13. Nine female heads of household, eight white families, three black, one Hawaiian, one Asian and white. Seven households were reported to have one or more disabled persons, and two of those homes received some write-off medication. Public service agency funds were utilized and helped serve 4,974 individuals right here in our city. Infrastructure project spent approximately $72,000 on Dakota from Cheyenne Curve to Fourth Street utilizing CBPG funds that definitely is needed in that area for the opportunity zone. Future plans are going to be in that zone, utilizing also debt taken from Vision Zero. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No.
Great job.
Commissioner Bowder, anything?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. All right, well, with that, we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider and approve the resolution approving the 2023, is it CAPER? Is that what you call it? CAPER for submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion passed, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to item 9, Resolution B 2382, Adoption of the First City Vision Zero Action Plan.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item tonight is to consider approval of Resolution 2382, Adopting the City's Safe Streets and Roads for All Vision Zero Action Plan. In 2023, the city of Leavenworth was awarded a grant to develop the Vision Zero Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, and on September 26th of 2023, the city commission selected WSP to provide the professional services needed to help develop the plan. The purpose of Safe Streets for All is to improve roadway safety by significantly reducing or eliminating roadway fatalities and serious injuries. The grant program focuses on the development of a comprehensive safety action plan and implementation for all users of our highways, streets, and roadways. The program provides funding to develop tools to strengthen a community's approach to roadway safety and save lives and prevent serious harm. For an action plan to be successful and accepted by the community, it is critically important that our residents be involved throughout the entire development process. Between online engagement with an interactive map, through a project-specific email to ask questions, seven pop-up meetings in an open house and arguments, the team of WSP and the city sharing information with the public and receiving valuable inputs on areas where there were safety concerns. This input combined with 10 years of crash data identified five areas where our focus should be. Those are vulnerable road users, arterial streets and signalized intersections, impaired and distracted drivers, young drivers, and speed. The plan developed by WSP and the city is a culmination of this effort over the last 12 months, and identifies and prioritizes a set of Vision Zero street reconstruction projects and potential system-wide safety programs that the city can be implementing moving forward. By adopting the resolution tonight and adopting this plan, there is no budget impact. With that said, the city will be eligible for implementation grants once the plan is approved. The staff does recommend the city commission adopt the first Vision, Vision Zero Action Plan by approving Resolution B 2382. This evening, Mr. David Church with WSP is here to highlight the findings and recommendations of the plan. I must say, it's been a real pleasure to work with David and his team over the last year, of their knowledge and professionalism and willingness to interact with staff and our community throughout this process that made this a plan and project that the city is proud. With that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, a pleasure to be here. I know you have a busy agenda, so I'll be running through this as quick as I can.
You're good, yep.
Here's, here's the agenda. We've been working the past year, like Brian said, with the team here of city staff and consultant staff as well. Well, we also had a technical advisory committee that included a lot of community stakeholders, including the police department, Parks and Rec, and the school district, and other, other important folks. This was a year-long project, and we're, we're right at the tail end of, of the project there in September. And we just recently submitted the First City Vision Zero Action Plan to the city, and it is posted on the city's website. It includes a Vision Zero pledge from the elected officials, acknowledgements, executive summary, and four chapters, including why Vision Zero, data and focus areas, toolbox of safety countermeasures, and then the implementation plan. It also includes four appendices, including public engagement summary, best practices, policy, and process recommendations, and priority corridors, and intersection profiles. So why Vision Zero? As I've presented before, in the last 10 years, there have been 17 people killed and 91 people seriously injured in the city of Leavenworth, and that trend is on the rise, and, and we're trying to get that to trend back down, down as close to zero as we can. Currently in Kansas, there's been 238 fatalities as of September 24th, and the goal is to try to minimize that as much as possible. We worked with the city to develop a project website and got a lot of great feedback from folks that went to the website. We had 149 folks that answered this question, what do you think are the top three issues affecting your safety on roadway in Leavenworth? The top three were distracted driving, people driving too fast, and, and potholes. We had a, a lot of folks use the engagement map where they were able to go in and put a pin mark and post there either concern or comment about a, a certain area involving driving, walking, biking, or other. And we've spent the last year doing a lot of pop-up meetings, including, some of the service organizations and really meetings that were going on that we, we just attended and either presented or participated in. I always like to say this, the Handry Network that we developed in Leavenworth shows that 50% of the fatal and serious injury crashes occur on just 9% of the streets in Leavenworth. So that was really our focus, was to focus in those areas. And as Brian said, we, there were six items that really stood out as areas to focus on that have made the biggest impact. Speeding was one. Young drivers, 14 to 25. Vulnerable road users or bicyclist pedestrians. Impaired driving, distracted driving, which are the same focus area. Arterials and signalized intersections with, which really came together if you looked at the map. We also developed a toolbox of safety countermeasures, including roadway countermeasures, things like traffic calming, access management, and reallocating lanes like four-lane roads that don't need to be four-lane roads, could be converted to three-lane, for instance. Intersections, including looking at utilizing roundabouts, curb radius reduction, and things to improve safety for pedestrians with intersections. Pedestrian count- Pedestrian countermeasures, including sidewalks and pedestrian, high-quality pedestrian crossings, things that really increase awareness of pedestrians where they're crossing. And also behavioral countermeasures like high-visibility enforcement. We worked with Sergeant Mance on a lot of things. Safe Route to School Plan is an opportunity for the city to have their plan updated. And finally, implementation plan. We focused on three things, safe speeds, safe streets, safe users, and came up with a variety of recommended countermeasures in those, including a traffic calming program, the use of more dynamic speed display feedback signs. For safe users, I'm proud to say that before this project and the county project, there were no high schools in Leavenworth County that are part of the SAFE program, which is a student-led program. And the school superintendent for Leavenworth High School is interested in having a SAFE program at Leavenworth High, Lansing High School the same, and Toggin-Hopsey the same. We're working to get other high schools of Leavenworth County with a SAFE program. Like I said, update to the Safe Route to School Plan for the city, and also something that is low-hanging fruit, which is updating traffic signal timing and equipment. We feel like that can make a big difference in trying to prevent red light running and other things that are happening to traffic signals. Pedestrian bicycle plan was something that a lot of the folks in the public were interested in. And as Brian said, if the city adopts the plan, it opens up opportunities to apply for federal funding to pay for these improvements, as well as other federal programs and local and regional funding sources. We identified priority corridors to focus on and priority intersections, and came up with approximate cost of the recommended improvements. And each corridor came with a corridor profile describing the observations and recommendations. And so, as we wrap up, really, all this is to achieve the goal of reducing fatal and serious injury crashes in Leavenworth by at least 50% by year 2035. So with that, I just want to thank you for all the support the city's had, and hope that you're supportive of the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
I appreciate the list of grants there, and whether they're hard or not to get.
When are you gonna have it done?
The time.
Yeah. It looks like a pretty big undertaking, but...
It says right in there.
Hmm?
What was she saying?
Oh. Yeah, it looks like a pretty big undertaking to follow through on all this, but I believe your department's ready to do it.
I think we are, and the great thing about the plan, it kind of lays out kind of that roadmap, and if not, it doesn't all have to happen in the first year.
Yeah.
That means we could start it and get to a long-hanging fruit, as we go through the CIP project or program each year. We could add these projects, whether it's the corridor or intersections, and work to make those improvements. And so, I think it's really important. We don't want a plan that we spent a lot of money on and a lot of time and effort to sit on a shelf. We want to make these improvements that basically help, you know, reduce the fatalities and serious injuries. We're excited about that.
Commissioner Bowder, any thoughts or questions?
Yeah, I'm glad to see the step-by-step plan with the year, and what, like you said, the low-hanging fruit to start out with, and I'm looking forward to seeing the rollout.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much for all the effort that went into that.
Fantastic.
Nice to see things come to full circle, right? Okay, well, then, we just, if there's other questions, just need a motion.
I move that the city commission adopt the First City Vision Zero Action Plan by approving Resolution B dash 2382.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Pass by zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work. Thank you so much.
Okay, we will move along then to bids, contracts, and agreements. Item 10, consider award of the 2024 to 2025 salt bid.
Unfortunately, at that time of year, we've got to think about this again. This procurement is to procure up to 1,000 tons of de-icing salt. Public work staff did replenish our salt supply this past spring and summer after the storms last year. However, a winner with a number of small events or a few large events, we can go through that material really quickly. Actually, in my opinion, the small events are worse. You get out there more frequently, put a lot of material down. In previous years, we would request up to about 1,500 tons, but we currently are full. And with our use of salt brine that we started a couple of years ago, we've really been able to reduce our salt usage. Leavenworth County did advertise salt bids for their needs and their bid specification to allow the cities and the county to piggyback along. Leavenworth had their bid opening on September 5th, and the county awarded the contract to the low bidder, Central Salt, and that's actually who we used last year also. And their bid price was $58.32 a ton, which is actually a little bit less than it was last year. That's one thing the price has actually gone down on.
Wow.
As mentioned, we do use salt brine to pre-treat our streets. Salt brine is applied before storm events, and it actually helps melt the snow and ice from underneath. We initially started treating only our hotspot areas, but we've added a lot more equipment over the last two years, and so we have more capacity. And so, as a result, we'll be pre-treating more streets going into this winter season. So the budget impact does depend on the severity of the winter season. Funding is available in 2025 to purchase all 100, excuse me, 1,000 tons. We won't do it if we don't need to. And so, we just try to keep the salt dome full during the year. We use, you know, 500 tons during the year, that's how we purchase, but we want to have authority to do up to 1,000 tons. The staff does recommend the city commission approve the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $58.32 a ton, grow to 1,000 tons from Central Salt LLC.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments on that item?
It was there last year, or last week, when they, over at the county, when they approved this, they looked at it, got the low bid, and said, go with it.
Yep. Not on any questions either. So, pretty straightforward. We'll go ahead and start with a motion if we could.
I moved that the city commission approved the Leavenworth County bid for rock salt at $58.32 a ton for up to 1,000 tons from Central Salt LLC.
All right, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingel.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed by zero. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 11, consider approval of the design-build amendment for construction of fire station number three and WPC administrative office.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, Mr. Faust will read through the policy report and overview that. We have a lot of guests here, Chief Birch from the Fire Department, several representatives from Cause Construction Company will be available to answer whatever questions you might have. We're excited about being here tonight during Fire Prevention Week to talk about building this new fire station and Mr. Faust's new admin building. So, look at that timing.
Good evening. The city did previously program replacement of fire station three. Due to the age of the structure, energy inefficiencies, and to accommodate larger trucks, along with ADA and gender-based requirements, in addition to the fire station, the recent assessment of our wastewater treatment plant indicated a need for health and safety reasons to move our WPC administration offices. Currently, they are on the main floor with the belt press right above them. If you go into the building, you can definitely tell what they do there. The city did solicit qualifications from design-build teams. Design builders, we're both a designer and contractor, are part of the same team that works together for a cost-effective design and buildable structure. This is different than the design-bid-build process where the design is complete and then the construction is bid. In July of 2023, the city commission approved in agreement with Julius Cause Construction with the initial design of the project. The designs for both fire station and WPC have been reviewed by staff, and the design-build team has finalized construction costs based on these designs. The new fire station does include three full bays for fire equipment, and will have an overall footprint of approximately 9,444 feet. We did include a picture of it in your package. There are some pictures out front. We weren't sure how to name the fire station, so that was one thought. We cast on that.
Give Gary a thumbs up.
So this is what it looks like.
Call phone with the fire chief, naming the fire department after a police officer. Excellent idea, sir.
So this is a view of what it'll look like, the three bays, just the colors it will be. So this is kind of a 3D view of it. There's the front of the fire station, the sides in the back. Time to complete the construction of the fire station is set at 425 days, once the city does issue a notice to proceed. The WPC structure is approximately 2,300 square feet, and that construction schedule is roughly 270 days. The 2024 CIP includes 4.5 million for the fire station, funded by bond proceeds, and an additional 775,000 from the sewer fund for the WPC admin building. The cost submitted by Cause for construction of fire station three is 4.898 million. This equates to $519 per square foot, based on the building. Budget was 4.5, however, 5 million was borrowed for the project, which will be sufficient to cover the cost of construction. The cost for the construction of the new WPC admin building is 754,000. This equates to $318 per square foot. This is within the budgeted amount. Construction cost shown is a guaranteed maximum price. There's also a liquidated damages clause in the amendment if the contract is exceeded. As the fire department will be displaced during construction, damages are set at $1,000 per day. Impacts to operations of WPC are more limited, and damages are set at $250 a day. The commission can elect to approve the contract amendment between the city and Julius Cause, or the commission can reject the agreement. Staff does recommend the commission approve the amendment between the city and Julius Cause Construction, or the construction of fire station number three and the WPC administration building, as the guaranteed maximum price is defined in the amendment, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Thank you. No additional comments unless you have questions.
Again, there's representatives from Cause Construction, Chief Birch is here. We're glad to answer whatever questions or what you have about the process, how we ended up here. But again, as Mr. Faust said, we recommend moving forward.
Okay. This has been, when did we originally, was this February, October last year?
July of 2023.
Been a little while, right?
Any major, like, changes, Mr. Faust, to, like, original bid and now, or anything like that notable?
Well, this is one of those where we had a budgeted amount, and so, other design-build teams that we talked to, looked at what we wanted and looked at that amount and felt they could either hit it or be very close to that amount. And so, that initial design phase was kind of that concept of what, you know, from the Fire Department or for WPC, what do you guys want? What do you guys need to function? And so, there was that process of back and forth between us and the Cause team of laying out different designs and looking what we could afford. And so, we narrowed it down to this three-bay, 9,400 square foot fire station that was just within that budget, just under 5 million, and similar with WPC. It was kind of a iterative process.
Okay. Okay.
Couple of questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bowder.
I don't have any problem with the contract or anything. It looks really good. The look of the station looks good from the pictures. I just have a question. Originally, they talked about having a drive-through all the way through from the front to back. Was that discarded because of the size of the lot? Or is that still happening? It's hard to me to tell from the drawing.
No, it's actually via back-end. The original hope was to be able to pull through. I think with size of the lot and the configuration of the building, we're also fighting flood plane issues. The fire station has to be outside of this flood plain, and just to the south of this, there's a flood plain. So there's this, there's space limitations.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mr. Faust, it says here it'll be 9,444 square feet. Do you have an idea how big is the fire station that exists now? I'm just wondering, how much bigger is it going to be?
The one that's here now?
Yeah.
And I don't know, runoff hand is quite a bit smaller, though.
Okay.
Commissioner Hingel, don't hold me to this, but I think I remember somebody saying around 5,800 square feet, maybe 55, something like that. So, I think that we...
It's on the record now.
We'll send that to you, but somewhere...
No, that's okay.
Significantly bigger.
The only other question I had was, and I can't find the exact terminology used, but when does "we'll proceed" go for it? When does that begin if we say yes tonight? Or is that 30 days from now it'll be "we'll proceed"?
As far as the fire station, there are a number of things that have to occur first.
Right, so the very first thing that we need to do is to demo the old one. That's the first major project, and that'll be a separate process, not included as the cause construct. We are going to hire someone to demo that. In addition to that, Chief Birch and his team are working on alternative locations for the fire team while the building is being built. So, those things are happening, but when that's done and we give the notice to proceed, that's when the clock starts ticking.
Okay.
But if from WPC's perspective, we're ready to go, we don't have to relocate anything. So that one for the COVID season.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. I just remember there was, original size was going to be, thought it was going to be a little bit different, a little bit bigger, and it changed something, so I don't know if you have any comments on that, or if it's just, you know, like, you talked about size limitations and the process and everything, so you guys are good with the size.
I'll talk about that, Mr. Mayor. So, a little bit of leeway, if you might. I came into the process around April, when I was appointed interim city manager. I think there was quite a bit of discussion about the size of the building, comparatively speaking, to the cost of the building. And although it would have been sort of utopia, it was just simply too expensive to build something that big. We then really got focused on almost nothing but the budget for a while, and so I was a little bit concerned that we were building the fire station that was a little bit too small.
Yeah, the internet now?
Because we were just simply focused entirely on the budget.
Just have it keep asking me if I want to log in.
Right. So, when I was appointed interim city manager, we got everybody together, got back on track, and it was my direction at that point that we need to focus more on building the fire station that we need. This is a 40-year commitment, and so be a little less concerned about the budget. I wouldn't dismiss that entirely, but certainly we needed to build the right fire station. And so, after a while, we had a lot of discussion, a lot of hard work by everybody. That's where we sort of landed on. The other piece of the process is we had already bonded for $5 million, and so that would have been quite a convoluted process to stop that and start that over and redo that. So, I feel like we landed on right where we needed to be, right fire station, right size, and right amount of money for everything that we could do for the parameters that we had, and so I think that's why we're all here. I think we're good now.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Okay, well, I don't have any other questions right now, then. We're good, just need a motion.
I'll make a motion that the commission approve amendment between the city and Cause Construction for the construction of fire station number three and for the WPC administration building at the guaranteed maximum price defined in the amendment and authorize the mayor to sign the... defined in the amendment and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded, and we'll begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed 5-0. Thank you very much. First consideration ordinance is, let's see, item 12, for special use permit to allow a daycare center at 1830 South Broadway Street.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. As you said, this is a special use permit request to allow operation of a daycare center at 1830 South Broadway. This is the former Council on Aging Building. The property is currently zoned RMX, which is residential mixed-use district. It was rezoned a few years ago, and the owner is looking at a few options, trying to figure out what to do with the building, but he does have a tenant who is currently getting her daycare set up in there. So the daycare operator is licensed through Kansas Care for a Maximum of 12 Children. Daycare centers in the RMX district do require special use permit. So the planning commission considered this on their September 9 meeting. There were no individuals that spoke during the meeting, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the special use request by vote of four to zero. Prior to that meeting, we did send out notice to property owners within 200 feet of the property, as is required by state statute. We received no questions or comments from any of the individuals that were notified. So staff would recommend approval of the special use permit request based on the analysis and findings included in your report and subject to the stipulations that are put in there. And if you have any questions, I am happy to answer those for you.
Thank you.
Wasn't the owner going to do something else with this facility?
Yeah, a couple of things.
He, there's been a number of options. We've, he's looked at doing multifamily in the building. He's looked at developing, you know, new construction townhomes, single-family on the rest of the property. I think it's about 14 acres. There's quite a bit of room to do stuff. So he's looked at all the options, and that's why he rezoned it to RMX initially because that's going to give really the most flexibility in terms of doing a mix of residential and office or commercial uses. So he's still trying to figure it out, as far as I know. But like I said, he does have this tenant who is happy to operate the daycare center in there for the time being.
Is this going to occupy the whole building?
No, it is in just the south end of the building, closest to that, the street on the south. And so I'm not sure exactly how much space she's occupying, but the bulk of the building is still open.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, if not, we just need a motion. Oh, actually, just a consensus. Are we all good?
Yes.
Nancy, you're good?
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on from here to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the commission approve claims for September 6, 2024 through September 19, 2024 in the amount of $2,197,197.57 net amount for payroll number 18 effective September 6, 2024 in the amount of $395,075.09. No police or fire pension.
Second.
All right, just, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Engel.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passed 5-0. Thank you for that. And before we move into executive session, we'll just go around the table.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, you might have seen this in the newspaper, but I want to reiterate to you and the community that the decision to have the Veterans Day parade, it will be downtown in its normal route. There was some discussion and potential for delay because of the construction on 4th Street, but we're satisfied that they'll be far enough along that we can have it downtown. There may be some minor tweaks to the route, but it will be downtown on November 11. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Bowder?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't be there for the Camp Leavenworth. I saw pictures and it looks like it was a wonderful thing. So congratulations on Camp Leavenworth and hope to see you next time.
Thank you.
I'll just echo Commissioner Bowder's remarks about Camp Leavenworth. I want to thank all the departments because it was kind of a joint effort to get that up and running, and it was fantastic. And so sad again that the rain caught us at the end, but we got almost there. We got almost there, so thank you for everybody. It was amazing, it was awesome. And I really appreciate the local vendors, the local food trucks that we were able to bring this year to make it more of a local festival. So I appreciate that, so thank you.
All right. Commissioner Engel?
Yeah, let me echo that, too. Thanks to everybody who worked on this thing. A big undertaking to get that much going and to have it go for a whole day and a half. I thought it went really, really well. Some of the music was really good. I was very impressed. In addition to that, though, I attended, I think it was just yesterday, yeah, yesterday, a CyberTech EMP and our Water Infrastructure Planning Symposium. It doesn't sound like something that we got to worry about immediately. It's something that we need to worry about immediately. There's possibilities to having our water systems just get attacked and destroyed within a flash. It doesn't take much to do it. So I encourage everybody to get interested in their water supplier. You know, here we have Leavenworth's water system, but other places not far away, like the Landell Water System. Those folks, get in contact with the boards, the water boards in your town or city, and see what you can do to help. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out and participated in Camp Leavenworth and for all the staff members that made it fun, fantastic, and fabulous. It was definitely a huge success. And then just special prayer just for all the schools throughout our nation, just praying for just peace, healing, and protection. And God bless and have a great week.
And yeah, it was a good time. Camp Leavenworth, man, I think, I don't know what the final count was, but we had, I know, 1,800 folks that walked in Friday night.
Yeah, we'll calculate all that stuff and have a final report, but I think the tally was somewhere 4,500, maybe 5,000 total. So we'll get that to you then.
No, that's cool. I'd like to also just kind of get it out there. You'll be seeing more on this coming up, but October 28th will be our City of Leavenworth Business Symposium. This will be, I guess, our third annual this year, so definitely want to spread the word on that. And with that, we'll go ahead and, I guess, I'll make a motion to move the City Commission to recess and to executive session for a period of 15, 10 minutes? Okay, period of 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter under the justification of to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel, KSA 754319B1. The City Commission, interim city manager, and human resources director will be present. The open meeting will resume in the City Commission chambers at 7:07 PM. I just need a second.
Second.
And we'll begin voting with Commissioner Engel.
Aye.
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 All right.
Were you taking Nancy with us?
Yes.